Good evening, this is the April 14, 2020, meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. In accordance with Massachusetts general law, this meeting is being audiotaped as well as in a virtual remote format. Our first item on the agenda is to move into executive session before I entertain that motion. Because of the governor's relaxing of the open meeting laws, I am required to read the following. Good evening, this open meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the coronavirus. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. This meeting will feature public comment. Even if members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. That much out of the way, I will entertain a motion to move to executive session. And as a reminder to all of us, since this is a brand-new venture into a different form of government meeting, every vote taken this evening will be a roll call vote.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation regarding PLH LLC versus Town of East Long Meadow for Rear Peas Road, Parcel 33-1-0, discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Unit TEU, Town Employees Union, and conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, library pages, and school crossing guards.
Okay, for our roll call vote, I'll use the same order as our seating arrangements in a live meeting. Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
And Mr. Henry? I don't think his audio is on. I can see him mouthing yes, but... Okay, that is unanimous. We are now into executive session. So, good evening, everyone. We are returning to regulars open session. This is the April 14, 2020, meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. And we are now down to item four on our agenda this evening, which is public comments. And we have one registered commenter this evening, Mr. Connor O'Shea.
He has not joined the meeting yet?
Well, then, we can take a motion to move to council comments and then to town manager report, if you would like that. Or we can wait till he joins.
Well, I think we should move on. And then if we have to go back, if that's the way everyone would like to proceed.
Sure. The other thing I want to say is we will definitely have to... Well, maybe not. Maybe we will get to 6:30 and not have to go out of order here. So, I'll move to item five in the council comments. Seeing and hearing none, town managers' report. You're muted, Mary.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
My report tonight is going to be somewhat brief. I sent, I think, through Jeannie, the updated written report the other day. I feel like I keep writing about the same things. I'm writing a book that has the same chapter after chapter after chapter in as much as we're just dealing with COVID-19 issues daily. There doesn't seem to be much room on the calendar or in the day for really anything else, trying to keep business going. I think we're doing a good job of that. The department heads are managing their workflow, and everyone is cooperating. It's not easy on anybody. So, we try to encourage each other and to make sure that everybody is able to manage the tasks that they're responsible for. We do continue these daily meetings. However, this week, we've decided to cut those department head and emergency operation meetings back to three days a week instead of every day. We have settled somewhat into a routine that... I know, for one, I appreciated having that noon hour free today because it prepared me for a statewide conference call occurring at 1 o'clock, which happens every Tuesday. But there's really not a lot to report other than the fact that we keep on trucking. The other issue that has squeezed into my attention is obviously the budget that we can talk about more later on or as the departments resubmit some of their operating budgets. I've asked them to consider a reduction in their overall budget of between 5% and 10%, if possible, in light of the fact that revenue streams and revenue amounts are quite undetermined at the moment, and I fear they're going to remain so for quite some time. Today, on the conference call with the lieutenant governor, there was discussion about this CARES Act, which has provided $2.7 billion to the country as a whole, $2.7 billion of which is dedicated to Massachusetts. Unfortunately, that $2.7 billion is only for COVID-related expenses. So, that's a good thing in that overtime costs and other unbudgeted-for items that are emergency in nature will be paid for, but it provides no option to use any of that money for lost revenue. So, there are many legislative efforts underway to get Congress to try to enact yet another stimulus that would be earmarked for local cities and towns use to replace the lost revenue due to this emergency. Nobody seems to know the timeframe of that or if and when it'll pass and how it'll be filtered out to the towns. The last thing in my report is a little bit of a note about this ambulance that we're able to get as a donation from Palmer Ambulance Service, largely through the efforts of your fire chief, Paul Morissette. Paul had asked MEMA a couple of weeks ago if there were a loaner ambulance available because the Town of East Long Meadow is... You know, you all know we have five assisted living and nursing home facilities, which are more or less congregate housing. And the paramedics are really under stress consistently. So, not to mention the fact that there was only one ambulance. So, he was attempting to get a second one, and that was denied, claiming that there were no loaners available. In any event, the Palmer Ambulance has a surplus ambulance that they're willing to give to the town. Paul informed me that it needed about $2,000 in repairs, but we have an extra stretcher that can be refitted to go in that ambulance. The expense will be the supplies for it, the EMS supplies. However, all those are reimbursable by MEMA, at least to 75% of what we spend. So, I know you have a motion on your agenda later on to accept that donation, but I really want to emphasize what a good job Chief Morissette did and continues to do daily to assist. And the need for this ambulance is exacerbated by the fact that Summers, Connecticut, and Long Meadow are unable to provide the level of mutual aid that they had provided in the past due to circumstances in their own communities that are impairing their ability to offer mutual aid. I mean, they're still part of our agreement, but their availability is limited. So, all department heads are tracking their expenses and time so that we can submit claims for reimbursement to MEMA. Even the administrative time can be reimbursed. So, we're just trying to keep track of everything, maintain a positive attitude, keep the town's business going. And I really have to... At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I want you to know how much the town department heads are doing on a daily basis. Most of them are performing in an outstanding fashion.
Well, that's good to hear.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mary?
I have a question. Mary?
Yes, sir.
Do we know that this ambulance can be certified by the state for use by us?
Yes.
Is that $2,000 in repairs?
Yes. Paul checked into that already, and he's been told that the certification is not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Mary, I'm just curious. Is this ambulance only for the short term until our ambulance comes in? Or is this something that we're going to try and keep on for a short length of time afterwards? Or...
I believe the plan is that it would be in service until our new second ambulance arrives, and then it would be kept on site essentially for an emergency of parts. We can cannibalize it perhaps and use it, but it wouldn't be a long-term solution, no. It's a 2006, and it will survive us. It will serve us well for the short term, but it's not a long-term plan.
And ours, the ambulance, the second one, is scheduled for October?
No, it was August. And I don't know if that's been deferred because of this, but it was contemplated to be late July or August.
Okay. All right. If no other questions, we will move to Ryan. Do we have Connor O'Shea yet?
Yes, Connor is in attendance.
Okay, then we will go back to item four, public comments. And this evening, we have a request from Connor O'Shea to address the council.
All right.
Connor, just as a reminder, name and address, please, before you begin speaking.
Do you see me?
No.
We do not. We can hear you.
Oh. How about now?
Just the audio.
Oh, okay. I don't know how to make the video come up here.
You can still...
There we go.
It'll still be part of the record. Oh, there you are.
There you are. All right. Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, I'm Connor O'Shea at 20 Tanglewood Drive here through Zoom. In the spirit of transparency, I am a candidate on the ballot for the June 2 local election, but that isn't pertaining to my comment. I'd first like to thank the council and the town manager for their unwavering commitment to the town during this pandemic. There's an item on tonight's agenda seeking the approval to reduce polling hours for the June 2 local election to 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and I have a couple of concerns with this proposal. First, this seems like an act of voter suppression. Typical voting hours in town have been 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for as long as many residents can remember. Reducing the window from 13 hours to five hours is a drastic reduction. I understand that absentee ballots can be requested, and I recommend them as an option for those wishing to stay home to protect their health. However, no voter should have to choose between having the forethought to request an absentee ballot and mail it back in time versus being able to vote in person in a severely limited time window. Secondly, I fear that reducing the polling hours would have the opposite effect on public health. Fewer hours could result in longer lines at the polls, which would result in more people being in the same area at once, even if they are six feet apart. Keeping the standard polling hours would ensure short or no lines for many voters, which could result in a lesser risk to the public's health. If the weather was anything like yesterday with the rain and the wind, it's not hard to imagine many opting not to vote so they don't have to wait in line outside in the inclement weather. We have all seen the spectacle of the Wisconsin election, and although East Long Meadow is a much smaller scale and has a great clerk to administer our election, I would hate to see voters in town face similar issues with not mailing their ballots in time or waiting in long lines at the polls. Lastly, if the council does move forward with reducing the polling hours, how will this change be effectively communicated to all 12,000 or more registered voters? Posting the change only on the town's website is not sufficient. One practice I was sad to see discontinued with the change in form of government was posting the date and time for elections on the sawhorses throughout town. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Connor. You're welcome. Thanks for joining us. We have already addressed council comments and managers' reports, so we can now move to item seven, approval of minutes. And in your packets that you made yourselves, you have the February 25, 2020, open session minutes. If there are no comments or adjustments to those minutes, then I will entertain a motion to approve those.
Okay, I would move to accept the open session minutes of February 25, 2020 of the town council meeting.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. And again, for those who are either watching this live streaming or who have joined the webinar, all votes this evening will be roll call votes for the purpose of transparency. Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor? I didn't... We couldn't hear you, Tom.
Muted.
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Okay, those motions that minutes passed unanimously. Also, the February 25, 2020, executive session minutes. If you have no additions or comments on those, I will entertain that motion.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the executive session minutes of the February 25, 2020, town council meeting.
I will second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Richards?
Um, yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
And Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Those passed unanimously. And now the March 10, 2020, open session minutes. Those are in your packet. Are there questions or concerns? Marilyn?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you. These are not substantive ones, I don't think, but I think they should be corrected anyway. Page one, first paragraph under zoning bylaws. It's next to the last sentence of that paragraph. I think there was some discussion about 5,000 or less. That needs to be corrected. Farm may not operate in residential zones of five or less acres. And I wasn't sure if that's the way it should read. That's how it actually read when I listened to the tape, and that's how the bylaw addresses it as well. So, it should be five or less acres. Okay?
Jeannie, you have that?
I'm noting that for Jackie. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Now, go to page three, please. And this is a simple one. This is after council comments, which is in the middle of the page. Second line after council comments at the end of the sentence, it says, "Subcommittee where..." It should be, "Subcommittee where in attendance."
Marilyn, which paragraph is that under council comments?
Council comments, that first paragraph, the second line down, after the word "subcommittee..."
"Where," I got it. Okay. Thank you.
And my last comment is on page nine. Let me find it. Page nine, at the end of the page, under item two, second paragraph, which starts with Counselor Richards. It goes on through the date, June 30, 2020. It prompted Counselor her.
That's you.
Just crossed me out. And that would be it. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments or additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the March 10, 2020 minutes with the noted corrections from Ms. Richards.
Still moved.
I second that. Oh, okay, second it, right.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Hey.
And Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Those minutes passed approved unanimously. And then finally, the March 24, 2020, town council minutes. Those are very brief because it was done shortly after the governor's executive order, and you have those in your packet as well. If there are no changes to any of that, I'll entertain a motion to approve those as well.
Kathy, just a question.
Yes.
With none of us being in attendance...
How do we approve them?
Exactly.
That's a very good question. Mike can vote to approve because he stood in for me that evening, and the rest of us probably have to abstain. But how does that wash out for the record, Jeannie?
I can look into that, and we can table it for the next meeting.
All right.
I'll communicate that to the council.
Okay.
Okay. I will entertain the motion to table this till our next meeting.
Still moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Okay, those minutes are tabled, and then we can move to item eight, communication correspondence and announcements. Item eight, the acceptance of a 2006 Ford E350 van-style ambulance valued at approximately $4,000 from the Palmer Ambulance Service in Palmer, Massachusetts, per Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A and 1/2. Is Chief going to join us remotely?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So, you have some backup information?
He is in the audience. Kathy, Paul is in the audience.
Do you want me to promote Paul so you can...
Sure, please.
There was an email, too, that was part of your supporting document.
Yes, I was just going to make reference to that.
Paul's now part of the meeting. You just have to unmute yourself, Paul.
Okay, there we are.
All right. Good evening, Chief, and thank you for joining us.
Hi, everybody.
Just before we get to the ambulance, I'm certain I speak for the council. We want to echo what Mary has mentioned to us earlier and to me all the time. We applaud you for all of your efforts as our emergency management director in what is, by all accounts, unusual, extraordinary circumstance. So, thank you for all your...
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's been a tough couple of weeks, but we'll get through it. We'll get through it. I got great support up and down, so we'll make it through.
Good. So, we have the information about the gifted ambulance to us. Do you want to just add to the story a little bit?
So, initially, I had requested to MEMA. My concern was, all our mutual aid partners who have been super and great for the past two and a half years, the past, you know, four or five weeks, they've been tasked with their own responsibilities in their own community. Long Meadow, one of our major players in the mutual aid, it's no secret, you could read the articles in the newspaper or hear it on the news. Their guys have been getting beat up. He asked to actually get bumped down on a mutual aid list because of the responsibilities they have in their own community. And as a team player in the program, I can't justify calling them because I know they're going to say no. So, Wilbraham is not too far behind them with some situations they have going there. Summers has stepped right up. They've been doing a great job for us. But before I sent that email out to the Western Mass Fire Chiefs, they called in... One of the prisons is now a COVID... Basically, a COVID hospital for the prisoners in the state of Connecticut. And it's in Summers, Connecticut. So, that's their priority right now, along with their residents. So, they've been available, but there is sometimes they're not available, and we're getting ambulance services from over on the Cottage Street area if they're around and available. So, it was a difficult choice, but I reached out to MEMA, asked them in their resource request... EOC is what they call it. And we've gotten a lot of good stuff. We've gotten a lot of PPE for the town, personal protective equipment. We've gotten a lot of disinfectant recently and some hand sanitizer. But when I asked for the ambulance, they literally... They canceled my request. "We don't have one. There's no way you're ever going to get one out of us." "National Guard? Nope, can't help you out." They said, "Check some rentals." So, I reached out to, you know, three or four of the regular vendors. Nobody's got anything available. So, you know, on a whim, I says, "You know what? I'll just send it out to Western Mass Fire Chiefs, an association that I have a lot of great friends, a lot of great colleagues in." And literally, within a half an hour, I had two options. This one, a little closer. I sent one of my guys out to take a look at it, and then I sent him up to West Hampton to look at the one in West Hampton. West Hampton had a few more struggles. It wouldn't have been free. They had a... They're looking to buy some radios that are trying to get some money out of the deal. They were running the ambulance until April 1, and they decided to get out of the EMS business. Crazy time to get out of that business right now, but they did. But their stretcher that was in the ambulance, brand-new, was bought on a grant. So, it's... There was a few more hurdles to receiving that one. So, this Palmer ambulance one, they wanted to help out an agency that was either starting up or just needed a second ambulance. This is a great ambulance for us. Even in the future, we can use it as our mechanical backup when the second one comes in and we need to put one out of service for repairs for a quick oil change or something even, you know, that needs to take it out of service for a few hours or a couple of days. So, I thought it was a great idea, and I'm looking forward to putting it in service.
Good. Any questions for the chief? Hearing none, I think it's pretty straightforward. Again, a testament to your creativity and forward-thinking and action-planning. So, that said, I will entertain a motion to accept this formally.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the 2006 Ford E350 van-style ambulance valued at approximately $4,000 from the Palmer Ambulance Service in Palmer, Massachusetts, per Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A and 1/2.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
And Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And that is a unanimous decision, chief. Good luck with that. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, chief. Good luck.
Everybody's safe and healthy. Thank you.
You, too.
I have a comment before Paul leaves, if I could. Is he gone?
No.
Okay, may I, Kathy?
Certainly.
Okay. Paul, I had the misfortune of having to reach out to dispatch and 911 for a neighbor who fell a week ago Friday. And I have to tell you personally, from the dispatch call all the way to the ambulance pulling out of the driveway, it was an amazing experience for me to see all of these young men who all looked 16 in their professional mode, in their PPE, you know, trying to protect themselves and take care of my neighbor. It was, it was an experience that I'm glad I had the opportunity to witness, so I could tell you personally how proud I am of our town, our, our response, how, you know, truly everyone was caring for everybody. And so, for what it's worth, I just wanted everyone to know what your fellows have done for the town of East Long Meadow.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I'll make sure they understand and they, they know that the message is passed on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great input, thank you, thank you again, Chief.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the approval to reduce polling hours for the June 2, 2020 local election. From 7:00 AM through 8:00 PM to 2:00 PM through 7:00 PM. Jeannie?
Yes.
Through the chair, please.
Yes.
To err on the side of caution, I would like to recuse myself from the election discussions and any vote that would be, could be taking place this evening. I feel there's plenty of diversity and talent on the council, and I'm confident that there will be an equitable solution without my participation.
Noted, thank you. Marilyn?
Also, as a candidate in the June election, I don't want my participation to be perceived as a conflict or perhaps pursuing something that I would benefit by based on my opinions. So I will also be recusing myself from this particular discussion, thank you.
So noted. Okay, Jackie, I mean, Jeannie, you're on.
Okay, so I did give you a little bit of background in the packet. Recently, the state passed legislation for communities in the state of Massachusetts to postpone their municipal election if it fell on May 30 or before that. So that was passed, and that does exclude us that has our town election on June 2. There'd need to be further legislation to include that date to postpone the election. So we, we have to hold the election. And I did meet with my registrars last week and an experienced precinct warden and my assistant who's experienced, and we talked about it. And other towns are reducing their polling hours to be as safe as they can. It's going to be a light election. That same legislature also allows for absentee voting without reason, allows for mail-in voting. So I'd like to reduce the hours as such. I'd like to also, and also reduce the amount of election workers too that are gonna be together on the election day. I spoke with Gordon Smith, the superintendent of schools, this morning, and asked him about, is school gonna be in session on June 2? He won't have a definitive answer until a week or so. So I believe right today, we have to act, we're holding the election on June 2. We should try to do it in the most safe way we can, you know, the least amount of people congregating in one, one spot at the same time. I did hear Connor's concern about too many people in one spot. One thing the registrars and I talked about was having, you know, somewhat what the stores are doing, having six feet taped off right out the door, right down the hallway, right up down the sidewalk if we have, and enlist enough volunteers to maintain that line. I'd like to have masks and gloves for our election workers. I'd like to have pens used by the voters and put into a receptacle to be disinfected and then rotate the pens and, you know, having wipes to wipe down the voting machines and take as many precautions as we can. But I think the step to reduce the amount of hours will help with the safe environment, and other towns are doing it, so. And after talking to Gordon, you know, we thought 2 to 7 would be a good amount of time. There's always a heavy amount of foot traffic on the suppertime. And after work, whoever is working that, those hours, if school's in session, 2 o'clock is a busy time for dismissal.
Yeah.
So I'm even, you know, even between when this item was added on the agenda, I'm thinking maybe it should be maybe 3, 3 to 8 then.
It'd be safe at 2:30.
Sorry about my dog.
Was he voting? I, I'll add him to the list.
Of all times, he has to see a squirrel, so, so that's my proposal.
Just, your dog was barking when I started to.
Yeah, excuse me one second, I'm very sorry.
It's all right. I think she's gonna let him out and let him get a squirrel.
Thank you, my apologies.
You said you could, because of dismissal time and should school be in session.
Yeah.
Having lived that innumerable times, that's, it's a horrible time, but 2:30 you'd be very safe.
Okay, so maybe then 2:30 to 8, I'd be willing to amend that, that time that's on the agenda. And I heard Connor too that saying there is sawhorses that used to have the polling hours in town.
Yeah.
That's a great idea, I would love to have that, the communication that he spoke about, besides the website. You know, everybody's gonna say they didn't know about it, but the website, Facebook, the message board, I would do a robo-call perhaps, perhaps three weeks before, letting.
Do a reminder article.
Reminder, you know, any way we can, I'm gonna look at different departments to see if they're having mailings going out in any particular time. I don't think the collector's offices, but maybe assessors where I can do an insert. So any kind of communication we can get out there. So it's a unique situation. I think we're fortunate that it's a local election, which probably is gonna be a lighter turnout than a state primary or a presidential primary in November. And hopefully, we won't be facing that by September. So this would be a unique situation.
Question for the chair?
Sure.
Jeannie, you mentioned you had a conversation with Gordon, and he anticipates getting an answer in the next few weeks?
He said he wouldn't have a definitive answer for a week or so, so it's still, I think it's still up in the air and when that's gonna come out from government Baker, I'm assuming.
Yeah, my second part of that question is, are we under a state-imposed deadline to announce when the election is gonna be at this time?
It has to be June 2.
No, I mean, when's our deadline now to announce that?
We don't have to announce if it's already scheduled.
But the hours, Jeannie.
Oh, the hours, okay, the hours, I've got the ballot at the printer right now, and the hours appear on the ballot. I'd like to get the ballots back from the printer as soon as I can so I can prepare for absentee applications to get that.
My concern, and having worked and participated in many elections in town, is if the school's in sessions, I don't know how they're gonna be keeping safe distance when the kids are in the hall and voters are walking through that.
That's why Kathy just suggested 2:30 would be a safe time, that, you know, I'd amend my proposal.
You know, if I can just jump in a minute, if school is in session, it's, it'll be because the governor has rela- reach, removed the stay-at-home or safe distancing measures because you could never run a schoolhouse and keep kids six feet apart. So I usually, when people ask me, do you think, you know, when's this gonna be over? I tell them that for me, my, the barometer is watch the governors as how they keep schools open or closed. And that's a good barometer for when will we be out of the woods, if you will.
That was my point, Kathy, with regards to the timing of Gordon's decision. And whether or not we, we absolutely need to select the hours now, or when we have more information, it can make a better decision, should we postpone it, table it to the next meeting.
I think Gordon is waiting for the governor, and unless he knows something that he's not shared, maybe he's just assuming they're going to hear from the governor in another week or so. He's, the, the schools are down till the 4th of May. That's really only two more school weeks away because of the April vacation that's next week.
Another thought is that the polling hours are listed on the ballot, but I don't think that holds us to that if it changes from there. Say if we say, you know, 2 to 7, but then we have to change it to 2:30 to 7:30 or 8.
Well, go ahead.
I don't think that holds us to that, and the only reason I say that is because this legislation that passed for towns that had to postpone their election, if they had already ordered their ballots with their original date, they're able to use those ballots for a postponed date. So if they're that flexible with the date of an election, I don't think that they'd hold us to the hours that were printed on the ballot.
Through the chair?
Yes. Pat?
Thank you, Kathy. Jeannie, I would, I would say that I would, I would go with the 3 o'clock hour just in case, but I would definitely recommend going with the 8 o'clock close because our whole town knows the polls are open till late.
Right.
And you're gonna, you're gonna have a half a dozen, a dozen maybe, people that are gonna show up between 7 and 8 and saying, what? Can't do that. So I would, I would go for the 3 to 8 rather than, than the earlier time. Also, to Connor's point, 700, there's only 750 people voted at the last election, the last June election. And that includes all of the absentee ballots. So I'm not really concerned about people being too crowded in a four-hour or five-hour timeframe. So those are, those are my comments.
Okay.
So I hope you adopt a 3 to 8.
Now, the 8 o'clock is a good point because at least on one end of that time, they're used to the end time.
Right.
So that's a good point, I would be willing to do that.
Don?
Through the chair, a couple of points. Hopefully, we'll start, you know, the country, the state, will start opening up jobs again, you know. So you have people that typically will vote in the morning or vote on the, on the ride home. And if there are more people, again, we're, let's, let's consider, let's pretend it's still 7:50. Is there a reason, logistically, not ha- for this one time, not having the voting at the, say, the Council on Aging Building for such a small number so that we don't have the commuter crowd truncating together on the ride home? And be able to, even if you do a phase to say 8 o'clock until 11, and then pause it, and then at 3 o'clock until 7. My, my concern is that a lot of people who vote, vote en route to work or on the way back, and if there's only one option, now you're gonna be having those 750, at least a fair amount of them gonna be in a long queue. So I don't know, I mean, if you're gonna be setting up, whether it's at the, at the middle school or over at the Council on Aging, you know, maybe offer some morning option, even for a few hours.
Well, I think to change the location would be a mistake because we're already changing the hours. So at least they're going, and I think I would have even a horse at the Burchland saying with the voting hours, if they went at like 9 o'clock, will they, will they know it's gonna be like 3 to 8 or something? If we were to go from 8 to 11, then 3 to, just the logistics of closing down and opening up and the, and the scheduling of the workers, I think would be a big headache to do that.
Has there been any discussion or guidance on split hours like that?
I haven't heard anything like that. I've just heard of towns just minimizing the amount of hours, consecutive hours.
And I, I've gotta believe that the majority of polling places across the state are cited in schools. So they're all having the same angst that we're having right now about it. Pat?
Through the chair, there would be a very serious security issue, I believe, with the ballots because the ballots are all in the, in the, the bottom of the bins, and they'd have to secure it in some way, and it's just fraught with.
That would be my concern as well, that, you know, there's your.
I agree with Jeannie, that would be, that would be a nightmare for Jeannie to try to administer in regards to the election workers, which are town residents, and majority of them are elderly, and I would hate to expose them in split shifts or for a longer period of time than we just spoke about, maybe 3 to 7.
And it's, because something's a headache, doesn't mean I wouldn't do it if it was in the best interest of the town and for safety issues. But I'm trying to have the election workers be in a safe environment also, and to have different people coming and going. This way, the election workers are only sharing one mealtime too, which is the dinner hour, and we'd have to do shifts so they're not, you know, together, assuming that we're still doing distancing at that point. And I think a lot of people will be doing it, even though if it's not called for by the state, so.
Anyone else?
Yes, through the chair. I had a email conversation with Jeannie this week with regards to us being considered a city or a town because there's different stipulations on how long the polls have to be opened. I'm satisfied that Jeannie reached out to the state, and the state said that for election purposes, we would fall under a town because we don't have any wards, so that we could reduce the hours to as little as four. But I just wanted to include that because the city would have to be open at least 10 hours.
Right. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion?
Kathy, we do have Bill Kaplan in attendance, and he is raising his hand. It's up to you if you want me to bring him in.
Please bring him in, thank you.
Okay, Bill, if you unmute yourself, you should be able to talk.
Okay, am I here now?
You are.
Great, thank you. As a registrar, pardon me?
From your eyes up.
Thank you.
There you go.
As a registrar, chair of the registrars, and I agree with everything that's been said. I am very, very much in favor of protecting naturally all of our town citizens, town residents, and all the election workers. I think what we need to try and do is just keep this as simple as possible. And I kind of agree with what Jeannie has said about, I mean, I, I don't think it's gonna help if we try and move the poll to a different place, we have to be careful for the hours. I mean, however you all decide to do it, I will naturally go along with. What I'm thinking is though, just keeping it as simple as possible, if we had split voting times, we would really have to do an awful lot of communication with town residents so everybody knows what's going on. And I also think for many, many of our election workers, we have to be very careful because I'm gonna kind of guess that there are gonna be quite a number of them, especially the slightly older ones who are very possibly gonna not be able to work that day. That's my two cents, thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us, Bill.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
I'm just gonna add one more thing, Kathy.
Sure.
Bill reminded me of that, I've got a letter to go out to the election workers tomorrow, you know, you know, depending on how this vote goes, to try to line people up, to let them know the safety measures we're making so I can see how many people are able to work, work that day, given their own personal comfort zones, so.
Right, Jeannie, through the chair?
Yes.
If I may too, we simplified the process by having the voting from 3 to 7, but many folks don't know that the election workers work for an hour or two longer to participate in the actual counting of ballots and takedown of the equipment. So I, I think that ought to be just brought up as a point, that doing one shift maybe from 3 to 7 makes sense.
And actually, 3 to 8 was on the table too, I think.
Yeah, 3 to 8, I'm sorry.
Keep that consistent end time, which I'm in favor of.
Okay, any other discussion? This is also, this requires a vote, and I will entertain a motion, who's got this one?
I move to reduce the polling hours of the June 2, 2020 local election from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM to 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
I second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0, as well as to Counselor Kane and. Motion passes 5 to 0, as well as to Counselor Kane and Richards recusing themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we are down to public hearings. We're a little bit beyond the scheduled time, the first public hearing. And both of these, for the record, have been continued from the March 24 meeting. And so let me reach for my protocols here. I'm going to open the public hearing scheduled for 6:30. The reason for this public hearing is to address a proposed zone change at Rear Peas Road, parcel 33-1-0, a 21.26 plus or minus acre site from Residence AA to an industrial, industrial garden park zoning district. Counselors here this evening remotely are Anderson, Hill, Page, O'Connor, I lost my, Kane, Henry, and did I catch everybody?
Richard.
Yes. The clerk will now read the legal notice into the record, please.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 24, 2020, at 6:30 PM, which was the original date before it was being rescheduled. In the media room on the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address a zoning change at Rear Peas Road, parcel 33-1-0, a 21.26 plus or minus acre site from Residence AA to an industrial slash industrial garden park zoning district. Information relating to this amendment is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the Council, Jean Quagliti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you. At the request of Attorney Jim Martin, counsel for the applicant, I will entertain a motion at this time to continue this hearing until May 20, 2020, at 6:30 PM.
I move to continue the public hearing for a zoning change at Rear Peas Road, parcel 33-1-0, a 21.26 plus or minus acre site from Residence AA to an industrial or industrial garden park zoning district to May 12, 2020, at 6:30 PM at the, so we have to put the location Council on Aging Room or?
That's fine.
The Council on Aging Building?
I will second that, second that motion. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to continue to May 12. Ms. Richards?
Discussion?
Oh.
The, the, this has been continued multiple times, going all the way back to, what, December, November. We've already gotten to the point once where it was accidentally dropped off of our agenda, and then we had to re-advertise again. I'm, as I said once before, I'm not against continuing this. I think at this time, we should take a vote on whether or not we want a zone change and move on from there.
Anyone else? Okay. We still have a motion on the table. So Ralph, if you want to introduce that after this motion, then you'll be able to do that. The motion's been made and seconded to continue the public hearing until May the 12th. Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
The motion carries 6-1. Thank you. Ralph, if we can come back to that in a minute so that I can be on time for the 6:45 hearing?
That's no problem. Like I said, the vote's been taken. I just wanted my opinion to be out there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have a second public hearing this evening. I will open the meeting now. Mr. Quimby, is the applicant ready to join the webinar?
If the applicant is here in your Zoom client, can you raise your hand? They are.
Okay. So this meeting is now open. The reason for this public hearing is to approve a wine and malt beverages off premises application for Nuaz doing business as Zane Smoke Shop at 611 North Main Street, East Long Meadow. Counselors are Richards, Page, Anderson, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Henry. The clerk will now read the legal notice into the record, please.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws that Nuaz, N-U-A-Z, DBA Zane Smoke Shop, 611 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, has applied for wines and malt beverages off premises liquor license. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, March 24, 2020, at 6:45 in the Council on Aging media room, 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. For the record, Jean Quagliti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you. The applicant is present and can now address the council and give reasons and rationale for the application. Mr. Nuaz, Nuaz, I'm sorry, Serib, please address the council, if you will, about your application. I think he's muted, Ryan.
He's not muted. Serib, we can't hear you. It might be in your client settings in the Zoom client. If you click the mute button in the lower left corner, you should be able to select your microphone. Alternatively, you can go and pick call-in audio, switch to phone audio, and you can call from a phone. We're up to 40 viewers on Facebook Live, as an FYI.
Nice.
That's FYI.
I'm very dark, and I don't understand why. The window's all around me in front of me.
I had to turn a light on, on the other side of my screen, or the, otherwise it was too dark.
So your face could get it.
So Kathy, I would add, if everything on the application has been previewed and is acceptable, do we have to have a comment from him? I mean, do we have a disposition on, on which way we want to move with this? Is everything?
Hello?
Yes.
Hey, sorry about that. It's not working.
Serib, thank you for joining us this evening. We are in the, the middle of the public hearing, and it's at the time where you, as the applicant, may present the reasons and rationale for your, for this request.
Okay, so we were, we submitted an application for a beer and malt license for on, on premises. And I believe it's on premises, I forgot. Whichever one you don't serve out.
It's off premises.
Yeah, off premises, sorry. So we did that a little while ago, but obviously we're canceled, and now we're back.
It's my understanding that if this license is approved for you, then you will be licensed to sell two different products, the merchandise in your smoke shop, and then the malt and wine and malts. My understanding is at that point, given the nature of both licenses, you would be required to change the name of your business? Jeannie, is that what we talked about earlier?
Yes.
Before the planning, but make an application to the planning board?
Right, and I believe, Serib, you had talked planning originally with your application?
Yep.
And you know you have to do either, either the smoke shop or the package store, however you plan to run the wines and malts off premises, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that you understood that this tonight is just one step for you.
Okay, yes, I understand that.
Is there any public watching this evening that would like to offer a comment at this time? If so, with your Zoom app, will you raise your hand for our host to acknowledge you?
Of the five attendees we have in the Zoom app, none have raised their hands.
Okay, thank you. Then we can now move to council discussion.
I would just ask my previous question. The applications we have been reviewing, everything seems to be in order?
I would say yes, Jeannie, everything's.
Yes.
I have a question through the chair?
Yes.
Jeannie, with regards to the approvals and sign-offs, was the Board of Health included in this?
Yes, and Serib and his partner have worked with Donna Bowman and Amy very closely with their, their current retail shop. Is that correct, Serib?
Yes, that's correct.
And they know that they are applying for the beer and wine off premises license.
So through the chair? Police are comfortable with this decision as well?
Yes, I sent the application when I received it first to the police, fire, health, and building, which I usually do with all the liquor license applications.
And I can presume everybody has signed off?
That's correct.
Thank you.
It's not a formal plan of signature, it's just a policy that I have when we get the applications, just to make sure there's no problems or concerns from any of those departments.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I have a couple of quick questions. So I'm, I'm looking for whether or not they require a Corey, and I see there was a Corey order, but I don't see that it was actually received. I imagine it was. Jeannie, was the Corey received?
Yeah, well, we, yes, it was received. We do have the Corey, and Serib is the manager. He's, he's, his name is under for the manager application for this.
Right, I just, I just don't see it in the materials. Also, I don't see any evidence of any training to sell liquor. Now, I know you don't have to be tip certified because you're not serving, but I don't, I didn't see any certification of some knowledge about the laws requiring selling of beverage, of beer and wine.
I'm not, I'm not aware there's any certification to sell, to retail. What we look at, and I know what the council looks at, is tip certification. So if that's a question you want to ask about Serib, his plans for tip certification, but I don't know of any kind of training you get to sell alcohol beyond that.
Sure, do they have an answer?
Yes, the only thing available for a certification would be tip certified, which I've done before, but it has to be renewed every couple of years.
Sure.
And we are planning to take the tip certifications. Any employee that works there, for now, it's just me and my partner.
Okay, thank you. One, one other question?
Yes.
I noticed on some of the information, your partner resides at 68 Bell Street, Bell Street in Chicopee. And then it's also Locust Street in Springfield. Did he move during this long period of time?
Yes, he actually did. It's, it's 68 Bell Street in Chicopee, and he actually moved not even about four or five months ago.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's why it was a little bit of a change.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Through the chair?
Yes.
So if I understand correctly, the smoke shop will be go away, and what we're gonna have is basically an off premises alcohol shop. Because if I'm understanding correctly through the health department, a smoke shop can only sell smokes. I mean it correctly?
Um, yes, we are, we can only basically sell one type, and it's not really liquor, it's more beer and malt. So there won't really be liquor involved. And then we would obviously not be able to sell retail tobacco if we obtain this license.
Okay. So, so with that, will you be changing the name of the shop? Because right now, it's listed as Zane Smoke Shop.
Um, we will eventually, obviously, if it's not a smoke shop, you know, gonna have to make it a beer store or something.
That's exactly my point is, I, I just think the name would be confusing, Zane Smoke Shop, and you don't sell smoking material.
Um, we, we will have tobacco products, which, which, which are allowed in liquor stores, such as like cigarettes. Other than that, yes, we, we do plan on changing the name for now, or we might just change this, we might just have the same name instead of smoked, replace it with beer and wine.
Through the chair, question for Jeannie?
Sure. Yes.
Jeannie, with regards to this licensing, how many of these are available currently that we have left?
This is the last one. This is the last beer and wine off premise license. It's the last liquor license available in town.
Mike, you had a question? You asked him.
I was just going to say, I wouldn't expect him to change his name until we have a decision tonight. If, if this was unfavorable, then he might want to leave it as the smoke shop. So that wouldn't have any bearing on, on my vote tonight.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, the council can vote to approve the license, deny the license, or continue the hearing in order to take the matter under advisement. And we do have a motion for that.
We do. I see it, Kathy, but I'm, I'm not comfortable in moving forward with an approval.
Okay.
At this point, I would like to have further comments by the Board of Health and the Police Department weighing in.
Any other comments before we entertain a motion?
Through the chair, I think we can still make the motion and vote appropriately.
So the motion that Jeannie has written for us is to approve the license?
Correct.
And so if folks are.
I'll be happy to do that.
Not in favor of it, then you, you vote no.
Right.
Okay, fair enough.
May I? Please.
Sure.
Okay. If there's any desire for in, in. If there's any desire for additional information, I would rather postpone the vote until we have, be able to make a more informed decision. If there's some issue about whether, what this gentleman is going to do at his shop, and whether the name is going to change, I'm even questioning what will the name go on the license? If we issue a beer and wine, is it to a smoke shop or is it to a yet to be determined facility? So I would rather wait and have the questions answered that we've been mulling around these last 15 or 20 minutes.
And in that case, then, we would have to vote to postpone to a future meeting?
I think earlier we mentioned that the Planning Board would have to weigh in on this to some degree, and I don't want to move forward with any approvals until the Planning Board weighs in as well.
Jeannie, any guidance on that, or Mary? If we vote this down tonight, like deny the license, then the matter is dead, correct? There's no, it's a moot issue for them to go to the Planning Board?
Well, I do have a couple of comments, that I did run this by the Police, Fire, Health and Building, and there was no concerns. And they have been working closely with Donna and Amy just to establish their smoke shop. So, the Health Department's very familiar with Zane's Smoke Shop and the establishment there. And Marilyn, as far as, you know, approving the license for Zane's Smoke Shop, I don't think that's relevant to, they are Zane's Smoke Shop right now. They're not, they're not Zane's Beer and Wine, so I think it'd be worse to, you know, approve the license to a business name that doesn't exist as a DBA. So I don't think that affects the license itself. And if there is more information that the council's not, you know, comfortable with, I'll be willing to get that. I believe you can continue the public hearing. It doesn't weigh on the, you know, the time you've acted on the application, the time the ABCC wanted you to act on it, you're able to continue the public hearing, if that's what you wish.
Thank you.
I hope that answers some questions.
Mike first, and then Marilyn, and then Pat.
What Jeannie just mentioned was the subject that I was breaching on. Until there was a favorable decision, I wouldn't expect them to name, change the name of their business. The other question I would ask right now is how long have they been in business? And has there been any violations with any department as long as they have been operating?
If you want me to answer that, when I reach out to the four departments when I get an application, I just simply say this application is coming before the council, do you have any concerns about the application? And I'll either get no concerns here or something, but there was really no concerns with any of the departments.
Okay, so there's been no concerns with Health, there's been no concerns with Police, and how long have they been operating?
I can't answer that. Serib, how long have you been in business?
I bumped them back from attendee, let me, I'll go there.
I think it was like six years. I could be wrong.
Serib, can you hear us?
You're back in, although I do believe you'll have to call back in for audio.
Maybe he can just hold up his finger.
Hold up a few years.
Can he hear us?
He can hear us, yes.
So, Serib, I think we have one question for you right now, and that is, how long have you been in business at your present location? Two years. Well, I said two times too.
So two years and no problems at this point in time, and no objections from any of the departments on the proposal of granting this application?
Okay.
And I found, I found the emails I got back from Police, Police Department, no issues. That was on February 25th. Amy answered me on that they have to understand they can no longer operate as a smoke shop. There was nothing from Paul. And Kevin said, well, a site plan waiver is needed, which would be a normal part of the planning process, so. And that was back in, well, February 25th, at least, anyway.
Marilyn, you had a request?
Not so much, not so much a request, just a revision of my thinking. Now that I understand that these emails have surfaced and that we know that the Health Department has weighed in, I don't know what outstanding information we would need before issuing a beverage and malt off premises license. It's not, you know, they're not serving it, they're just, it's retail, they're just selling it.
Right, Pat?
Thank you, Kathy, that was exactly my point, is I understand and I applaud the need to get additional information, but I don't know that I've heard what specific concerns or additional information we would need. I think we've got the answer from all the various departments. And so I'm not sure what the point of continuing would be unless someone can give me a specific example of what it is that we're missing.
I would agree with Marilyn, I think my concerns and questions haven't been answered. I just wanted to make sure that the Board of Health, knowing that you cannot offer paraphernalia, smoking paraphernalia and liquor in the same location, was a concern because I've been in that shop and that's what they do offer.
Yep.
And my communication with Amy was just yesterday or this morning. Just could reconfirm, actually at Ralph's request, so.
Okay, so the petitioner knows that they have to remove the products, aside from the cigarettes, and I'm not sure about the cigars.
Remove the law?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to approve this license.
I move to, I move to approve an application from Nuas doing business at Zane's Smoke Shop, 611 North Main Street for a wine and malt beverages off premises liquor license.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes, Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
And Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Gentlemen, congratulations and good luck with your new business. Thank you. I guess they're happy. Okay, we can move to orders of the day. We have no licensing matters before us. We can now then go to financial matters. And we have the approval of local option to extend the real estate exemption application deadline, an act to address challenges faced by municipalities and state authorities resulting from COVID-19, Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020. Mary, are you going to introduce this piece? How's that? No? Sorry, I'm going to get the hang of this pretty soon. The governor signed an order on April 3rd, two weeks ago this coming Friday, allowing local communities to extend certain due dates for filing of certain exemption requests, to delay the payment of real estate taxes from May 1st to June 1st, and to waive interest on certain payments made after due dates. Those are the issues, I think, before, for you for consideration tonight. Now, there is a question. The charter names the town manager as the Chief Executive Officer, and this order says that this decision on whether to extend this relief lies with the Chief Executive Officer if there's a person so designated by a local charter. However, since the matter is one of policy, I thought after discussion with Chair Person Hill that it made sense for at least to have the council members express your thoughts on the reasons for or against making this relief available. I will only tell you I'm in favor of it. I think that we should allow the benefit that the Commonwealth is giving to all of its residents, to those who need it. We're sort of of the opinion that most people, if they have the ability to pay and their customers to pay their real estate taxes on May 1st, that they would do so. I did check with our town treasurer, collector, and she indicated that approximately 35% of the quarterly tax bills that were sent out are paid by the mortgage holders. There's an 11, the billing was approximately 11 million per quarter, and we receive around 38 or $4 million of that amount on a regular basis. But she had no way of being, you know, precise on that. That was her best estimate. So, and I know that the assessor has a question. She has already received some applications for veterans exemptions that are due to be filed by April 1st. She's received them after that date, and I think she would like to grant the relief requested and cannot do so unless this order is implemented in East Long Meadow. So, that's, that's the topic. And you have the order, I believe Jeannie included it in an email to everyone.
Yes.
The sections I'm referring to are Section 10, which is on page four and five of the order. Starts at the bottom of page four, Sections 10 and 11, and goes through the top midway down page five.
Mary, are you looking for some direction, like a vote of the council, to assist you and at least the spirit of working together to move this forward?
Yes, I think it's important that as the elected representatives in the community that you weigh in at least and express your opinion on this issue if you choose to. And that would be helpful to me, to know that you supported what my thinking is. But it will also be helpful to me if you don't support what my thinking is. It will be helpful to me to know that.
Yep, through the chair, I would agree with Mary's recommendation. I think it makes sense, given our current circumstances. I know that a majority of mortgage companies do hold the NUSCRO and will make these payments. And regardless of the percentage, I'm not concerned about them as much as I am about, excuse me, the residents, and especially the older residents which have their homes paid off and don't have a mortgage. And they're going to have to come up with potentially a large chunk of money, and maybe their part-time job has gone away. So, I move to, or I would be in support of extending this.
Thank you, I would echo that. I think it's the one thing the council can do in these times to acknowledge the struggles that our residents are likely enduring. And if this gives them additional time to make the payment and get their bills in order, I think it's the very least we can do as representatives of the people. Mike?
I would agree with everything that's been said so far. I think this is a good way to help those people out that might have a little shortage of cash flow at this point in time. I would also think that there are residents from the town that would probably pay their in the timeframe that we normally pay them in. So it doesn't mean we have to, you know, we have to take advantage of that. I know how I feel, and I'm going to pay my taxes when they're due. And I would only remind people that when we go to pay the next quarter, that's, that window's going to come around much quicker for those to take advantage of this opportunity because they're only going to have a two-month window before the taxes are due again. And that's it, but I am in favor of pushing this out.
Anyone else, Marilyn?
I agree, I support relief at this point in time. You know, we have no idea what our residents are experiencing out in the community. But I do know that there are those that have, you know, with restaurants closed, with, with people not operating, jobs are not necessarily being funded like currently our employees are. So absolutely, we should support this.
Done.
I agree with all the comments. The other thing is it's going to reduce the number of people going or attempting to go to Town Hall later in May. And in addition, Mike brings a good point that the first quarter fiscal 2021 bill will be due just a couple of months later. Maybe the legislator will, will consider having not a one-month extension, but a 15-day on that one so that there'll be a little more of a gap between the two bills.
Okay. Any thoughts, Ralph?
I would agree with, completely with what everyone has said. It only makes sense to, you know, do the extension. It just, in these times, people need all the help they can get.
Agreed. Mike?
Just last, one last comment, because I did have a couple of residents ask me this question, and they wanted to know how we came up with this timeframe. And I explained it to them that we want to remain in the fiscal year 2020. And so that's as far out as we can really go with this, and hopefully it generates some relief.
Right, and it's actually stated in, inside the, the bill here, an act to address, that it's got to be paid within this fiscal year. You're right. So Mary, as the Chief Executive Officer, you can go ahead and cause that extension to occur. Do we need to take a vote?
I don't think a vote is required.
Are you comfortable with the feedback?
Yes, very, thank you very much. And, and the order was also initially, it said that if a town chose to employ this, you had to notify your residents by mail. And they've since rescinded that requirement. And notification on website or Facebook is sufficient. But I'm thinking maybe we should put something in the reminder or certainly issue a press release. We'll get the word out.
Robo-call.
Robo-call, sure.
All set, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Under Financial Matters B2, the FY 20, third quarter update from Finance Director Sarah Menard. Ryan, I don't see Sarah as one of the participants, let me just check again.
Find her. Chairperson Hill.
Yes.
I did give her, she did ask to be excused tonight, and I, I did allow that. She indicated that with the third quarter closing of the books, so to speak, she didn't have time to prepare the report that I was expecting for tonight. So, I have some data that I think are somewhat salient points to transmit to you. And the full report from Sarah will be available at your next meeting.
On the 28th?
Uh, yes.
Okay, fair enough. Under Old Business, we have none. Under New Business, the summary of action items for the next meeting. Right now, I don't see that we have any specific...
Through the chair? I'm sorry, I wanted to just make you, make the counselors aware of a couple of items that Sarah did transmit to me.
I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, I probably wasn't clear. With our budget situation as it is and the uncertainty about the revenue stream, I, I want you to be aware of the specific accounts that are in overspent status so far. And as I sit here tonight, we are $342,000 in red ink between six different departments. And that's through the end of March. And those are bills and invoices that were processed through the end of March. It does not necessarily encompass all the services and invoices that have been incurred in March but not processed. So I think the damage is a bit worse than that. And it also does not include the anticipated overage in the town manager account, the town council account, and police and fire overtime. Now, police and fire overtime, we may get some relief from MEMA funds through the COVID relief. And there is $112,000 reserve. the COVID relief. And there is $112,000 reserve that's available to offset some of these deficiencies. But the legal bill alone is 99,000 through the end of March, and I know there's 25,000 more waiting to be paid. So I just want you to know that, that those funds will likely be paid through free cash allocation. And since we've already dipped into free cash a couple of times in the last few months, I just want to, I just want to make you aware of some of those deficiencies. And then Sarah can amplify with the detail at your next meeting.
Well, thank you for that continued news.
That uplifting message, I'm sorry.
Being flip, I'm sorry. It was very uplifting, or down, down lift, you can't go down lift, whatever.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate the heads up. Let's put it that way. Thank you. Okay, we were down to the end of our agenda. We were in executive session prior to 6 o'clock and have some unfinished items to still address. So I am going to move that we enter executive session for the purpose of, as, as outlined already in the agenda, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining unit, TEU, which is the Town Employees Union, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. We will return to open session only for the purposes of adjournment. I'll need a second on that.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Miss, I'm a yes. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Did I say that already? Did I jump to you already?
No, no.
Um, I have to turn some lights on in my dining room. I can't barely see. Mr. O'Connor?
He's muted.
Tom?
He's muted.
Back ones.
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. We are now moving into executive session. To our residents who logged in and joined us, and to our live streaming folks, we will be back in regular session again on Tuesday, April 28th. Thank you and good evening. Executive session at 8:15. And now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move for your adjourn.
Second.
Simple enough. Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at 8:16.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, everyone. Stay safe.